Now, what I can do, what I can do is...
Bear County was just advising us, Bear County can't go, she was saying that she took pictures of it, she can't shut it down. It's up to the city to do. So if we need to get like an inspector out there maybe to see if he's up to...
But what you don't understand is that I've already paid for a maintenance agreement. That is his job, that he is licensed by the state of Texas to go make sure that it is in compliance and to stay in compliance.
Could we have his name, I mean since we...
You have a copy of the contract?
Yeah, who said license? We talked about it at the last meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
We didn't get a copy.
Yes, I issued your...
Each of us?
I don't know that I issued each of you, but I gave one. I gave one and like I said, it gets inspected on a... I can get you one, I can send you...
Who did you give that to? I do remember you having one. Did you have more than one?
Well...
I don't remember, I have all my stuff.
I don't think that I brought, I know I brought one.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't imagine me wearing...
I would like to see a copy of that.
He has to turn in his report into the county, okay?
My suggestion is you get ahold of that guy, he's trying to pick up you and flies out here. Who's your contact?
That, the issue with that is, is he has a certain amount of time that he does his report. I have no control whatsoever.
I think that's the easiest place to start, call that guy.
And I have, like I said, I have no problem bringing, I didn't bring it with me today, but I can, I can get you a copy of the contract and, you know, like I said, we're in the process of upgrading the system, you know.
You're upgrading, but it's still in compliance with the twenty...
It's absolutely.
Have they been out there after the county?
Yeah, she got, I mean, she didn't come talk to me, but I mean, I've seen her car. And when I say her, I don't want to use her again. Oh, about three weeks after we met.
The city hasn't received anything and it's probably...
Yeah, because when she was out there before, seven days later is when I got the, when I got the COVID.
It's just a matter of getting the docs.
Okay.
Yeah. But what I'd like to do is, is, uh, I need to get it off of the agenda because if someone goes to your website and looks it up and closes the trading form, it gives a negative, it gives a negative response and, and I have no idea how, how much y'all know, but because we sell mixed beverage, we pay fourteen point nine percent in sale tax. Okay? We pay almost seven and a half percent more than anybody on the mixed beverage. On the mixed beverage. And there's a line that it could go to either place because it's paid to stay. We put the city of Chinatown in there. So we've had a sale tax of eighty-nine hundred dollars last month. Plus, in the process of buying our property, the property was appraised two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. I paid three-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand for it. So I won't be getting before the property taxes gonna go up. I mean, you know, we're trying to be a good neighbor and be productive, you know, and it helps the city of Chinatown grow, or it helps me, it helps all the businesses out there. So I would like to get it off of the agenda. If you have any questions, you need anything whatsoever. I just don't want any more negativity, you know, to where y'all, y'all talk to a group of people here, I probably have a hundred of them every day in my place. Hopefully.
Mr. Ritz, can that be done, that we take that off the agenda and also take it off our website so that the harvest business, if he has provides that gentleman to get him...
He's just substantially complied with all these requirements that they sent in the email. And I think we can pull it off and just, you know...
Regardless?
Just, and you know...
I don't see increasing the keep it on your, if you have a permanent county, then there's no problem.
If you have, if, if there was a health issue, I can promise you the health department would be all over it.
But I think you should get in touch with the inspector and find out how you check the boxes and that therefore you have the documents.
I think I can do that.
That'll be easier than calling the county.
They should, I think Bear County should have given you a permit.
Excuse me?
Bear County should have given you some kind of permit.
They don't get issued to me, they issue to the maintenance company.
To the maintenance company.
The maintenance company sends a report in on a quarterly basis. And from that quarterly basis is how that they stay in, the way I understand it, I'm not the subject.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is D, considering act of complaint of discharge of firearm from property on my day of bail for four H speed shooting.
Mayor, before the meeting, I passed out some documents I had received from Phil McKinney, who is the attorney for Mr. LaValle. And as I understand it, the property was annexed in the manner contemplated by the statute and it is sufficient in size that the farm regulation that the city had did not apply to that property. And I haven't heard otherwise from the city, so I don't know if it's still an issue. I believe, and I'll change this in here, did you go out there?
Yes, yes sir, yes sir, we sure did.
And it's bigger than...
Yes, it is. I looked it up on the maps with Bear County prison district and it, you know, that installation was after that date.
After September one?
Yeah, and also the...
Mr. McKinney tells me that all Mr. LaValle does out there, and apparently he's gonna be there for a long time, and I think the decision made a month before is to work the four H speed shooting and he's not running a business. All I can tell you is I would take this attorney's order. So I don't know if this is really something we can continue to profit now or the council has any concerns about it or that the city can just consider a matter of course.
I read that this pretty, I understand it, and it's really something that we have a nice quiet city here and somebody can't go on their back porch on a Saturday morning without hearing pow, pow, pow all for four or five hours. It's really nuisance that...
It hurts the neighborhood.
I understand what's going on, but it's terrible. We can't do something about that. And if it was before, if he was running a business, I guess we could have the police maybe check on that. But man, it's just for four or five hours, you hear pow, 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 and I imagine, I'm here at my house, I imagine the neighbors up there, how they...
It's funny, it's just letter of saying it, didn't know what was to the north of it. I'm not sure, does that north go towards Tarragonita's back there?
Yeah, it doesn't go towards Joe Lister High and that area, but there's a little open field, I think, on the other side of that.
Does it, this way north, south this way?
Yeah.
North, south, the long, the long area of...
Yes, it's right off the railroad, I think the block has, don't quote me, but I think it's seventy-five forty-six around that block.
I know where the entrance of the place is.
And it's a, it's a big gate and it's a long dirt road that leads to the back.
And how near?
And it's supposed to be at eleven, anywhere from ten to ten and a half.
That's what I thought, it's like ten and a half.
And it goes completely all the way to the back. And what we were told, when we actually, because we actually caught them coming out, so we, Larry and I, and we were told that they were grandfathered. We told them that they, they could not shoot anymore at that point, that it had to stop. And basically he told me that, that he was grandfather, that he would stop at this point and that he would actually give it to the mayor and actually work this out. So no citation was issued, he was basically warned to stop at that point. And from what I understand, they had their conversation and he still shoots. So that's pretty much the end of the story. And yes, it is north of Tarragonita. A good north, maybe...
Yeah, because we can hear from...
Maybe three hundred yards is a football field, you know?
Yeah, I didn't hear it.
I don't like that book, but what it sounds like.
There's some times that they...
There is times he issued it quite a bit.
Proposing him, hey, you can shoot there this time and this time. And so he's not out there cracking on.
I don't understand that season and that type of stuff because most of these people that do have some acreage do that. I think there's more, I think...
The day of pow, pow, pow is just constantly...
Yeah, and I really think at one point there was just more than four H speed shooting going on. I have no proof to that, but, anyway.
Well, let me ask you a question. The city can't participate with this territory, can regulate the bases. So he can't be out there at eleven o'clock at night doing target practice. But you can't say you can't shoot shotgun.
Because I, at one time I thought he had like a shooting range out there for he was actually having people use guns to fire. It's what I've been told.
Well, the shotgun makes a very distinct sound and it's completely different than a pistol.
What does this have to do in this letter that says Mr. Dump lives at least two point five miles from the property?
They're accusing him of that.
I think that, that was what the attorney wrote to me and I think that's the nearest residence.
No, Mr. Not...
My name was mentioned, what's going on?
They're accusing you as a complainant, but you wasn't.
No, the complainant was basically a resident of Tarragonita who owns the property adjacent to him on that little dirt road that leads into there. And that complainant did report that he was renting out the property as a business. But that's not me, that's the complainant.
What did they regularly regulate it?
I don't know, I think there's some mystery there. All I know is this issue's come up before and...
Well, I think the person that...
It wants to regulate it, it can't, but it can't totally regulate it.
What would be the regulating, the best we could do?
It was some ways of operation, number of people that can be out there.
I don't know, they, they divide or something like that.
Not in the morning when it's Saturday, when people are sleeping.
I can speak to his lawyer, his lawyer's pretty reasonable. I've never spoken to LaValle.
You know what concerns me also? There is no restroom or facilities or any type of facility. If he has young four H kids out there, what are they doing for bathroom usage, water, I mean water he's renting? I mean, I don't, he's not renting no porta potties, so...
This is all these things.
This is my thing, man?
Yeah.
There's no hassle.
Do we do anything, by inspection or...
On the Bear County prison district thing, they show some buildings there.
Not to mind, not sure there's no bathroom there.
And so the concern is that the hours that he's doing it?
Yes, that's I guess what the, I believe you had a complaint, Mr. Dump, from someone, is that how this...
Yeah, with a resident of Tarragonita.
Probably called him because he didn't know what to call, I'm assuming that's how that...
He is the past mayor, and this issue has come up before the city of Chinatown, approximately seven years ago, so...
Was it the same complaint?
The same issue. And then the same Senate bill, seven thirty-four, went into effect where the city cannot regulate the discharge of the firearm on a property. And I believe even countless persons margin there wasn't involved in that particular issue. We had, the city has issued, the city has exercised that right to stop firearms. One such example was on the Mack Morris property. This was probably about three years ago and it involved speed shooting. And it was, the discharge was going on the neighbors' properties and actually landed upon their areas. And the city did stop that. But in his particular case, his area was annexed before September first nineteen eighty-one. So I told the former mayor of the city of Chinatown, just move on your shooting to the other bakery. And he moved down the road, so...
You know, I can call Mr. McKinney and if you want to give some instructions on what you'd like to see out there. You know, I don't want Mr. LaValle, he may say, hey, no, I've got this alone, I can shoot all I want to.
He will, he will. Probably will.
Mr. Penner, if you're gonna talk to his attorney, clarify the situation that I am not the complainant.
I don't know where that came in, I just...
I was contacted because I was a former mayor and people knew me, I would work on things.
Right, I know.
Yeah.
We were, at first, just trying to figure out what was going on out there and...
Well, if you could try to maybe, I mean, I know if he has four H kids, you know, they're in schools during the nine months of the school year, they're not available to come out till four in the afternoon. And of course, wintertime, it gets dark early, you know, I can understand that. But I mean, if, if we could maybe get some timeframe of, you know, do you mind not starting before nine on a Saturday or Sunday, you know?
Not on Sunday at all?
Or not on Sunday at all, you know, and maybe end, you know, four o'clock in the afternoon where, you know, we can enjoy sitting on our back porches and not hearing the pow, 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 pow all the time.
I can help.
And just, you know, see, if we can come up with a reasonable...
You, you do, again, I think, I'd say, I think everybody followed you. You can't stop her from doing it totally, but you can say, hey, wait a minute, you know, have an arm surgery.
At all, that was...
And avoid the neighbors. So I think that's, that's, you know, I can do that in my opinion, see what he has to say.
And then if there is ever a problem where the pellets are falling on a residence, now will that be then a different issue?
That's good law, big law.
The law says they can't be nearer than a certain number of feet, so I just, they populated that with the idea...
Would be a different issue.
Shouldn't be happening. If it is happening, then yeah, you have an issue. They come up with some super long range shotgun there or something, you know, who knows?
Actually go under, check out shooting range, and then they recommend thirty-eight. That way you don't get to protect your alibi over and then somebody's property. But there is a state law that if it does go where somebody's property...
Yeah, they're not relieved of liability, you just can't stop them. So Mayor, do you guys just want to take some action on that to instruct the city attorney to just call? And I'm just gonna call and say, hey, look, your guy needs to do something, what's he willing to do? And then we'll work with him.
Well, a nuisance property.
No actions on that. Item E, considering act of request new business permit submitted by Robert and Diana Moreno, higher than mixed martial arts, or business can open seventy-five seventy-five highway seventy, number three. This is Mr. Moreno.
We're just trying to make martial arts school, but that is, it's a kids' program, adult's program, a party fitness class, and we're still trying to incorporate a special program for kids at seven years.
How many people do you expect?
There are different hours, Monday to Friday, Monday to Saturday, and it's different hours, so it's like maybe fifteen in a class, sometimes.
Fifteen to twenty-five people per class.
But they don't all show up. It's offered to them Monday to Friday, but I might say that if I have twenty-five students, various of the adult students come in, they're, they're various, anywhere from nine students to fifteen students, and they're lucky to get them on and they say we need the faculty.
Okay, what was the bathroom thing? Is that in reference to you guys?
I think so.
Can I, can I, pardon that one? Yes. Within that building, since it is like a twenty thousand square foot building, we used to have two restaurants for everybody. Now that we are not doing, we're not in operation, all the citizens are not operation, we have divided small pieces. Present day of, it was there that the gym bouncing, they give a permit for thirty-five people a day. So they are getting that place. We put a safety tank for other places that we divide. We just got, I brought that paper for, I sent it to mine.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Yes. I, that is safety tank required for other places that we divide for...
So it doesn't have anything to do with it?
Don't have anything to do with it.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So they have sufficient restrooms and everything where they're...
Two restaurants, safety tank, everything separated.
Okay, okay. I don't have a problem with that. I'd take a motion to let them have their martial arts classes at that location.
Yeah, you have a motion on martial arts, Justice Pop, I'm saying it.
Second, I'm voting.
And same for Councilman Ritz, all of them pay for the show.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried now.
Thank you.
Thank you, you love the business.
Thank you.
You can see the city here to get the permit. I am now discussing, consider providing council members with financial reports, um, for totals by financial statements by chief of the...
What we got today, the check detail, that is very nice, I appreciate that very much. It allows us to see, you know, and then the deposits allows us to see what is going into the bank. So if we can either get this every month and we're able to see or either the general ledger detail of cash accounts, that way we can see the ins and outs. That would help us a lot, whereas before we were getting the total.
Right, and we're still, still looking at, seeing some problems and some of the figures isn't there. And trying to figure out why, what was going on.
I have credit to debit accounts.
Well, while we still have some money that's owed to the missing bank account, I think we closed the account. You know, and I think it's a general...
Was it just this branch?
Oh, just this branch.
Yeah, just that branch, but looking, looking at it, those general entries made, and I don't know if it was made right. And there's some, also the auditors gave some general entries to be made and I'm not sure if they were done right or something like that in the latest, so...
Because I have questions about the balance sheet, they were...
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it really, it really got to me when I have the school crossing fund and a hundred thousand dollars, you know, obviously it should be in the tax area.
How did that happen? The books is a funny program.
It's weird though, I imagine how it works and...
There's, there's just my stressing again, Mr. Mayor, the importance of getting someone in there.
But I think if we can just, I don't know, we have to act hard, but if we could just...
Give us...
Get this type of information.
And then eventually get that together, we'd love to have that too.
Yes.
Do we need to make a motion on that or anything?
I don't see an action on it, I don't know there anything. But again, I think everybody knows what you want.
It's just a matter of getting it though, that's...
Right.
There is one more thing, if we could get the income statement with the month, year, today, and variance to budget.
Okay, yeah.
That was what the council used to get that, and that was very helpful too, to see where we were over or the budget, right, about the...
We could run that, but I have to see what the, make sure the budget...
I gotta make sure the accounts are correct, but, but yeah, if we could start getting that.
Because it will do it. It will give you what, right, what is spent and ensure what the budget was. And then the problem we had was that we kind of carried five months. We got like a short period for five months.
Right, okay.
Because we're starting, we're coming here on October first.
Right, so we're gonna have, will we have a short one for these five months?
I don't, I'm gonna have to ask, I'm gonna have to ask the CPA about that one.
How long do you think it'll take for that to...
It'd be a few weeks.
You think by next month?
I hope by next week.
That's about so.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that, if not, we'll look at...
I have to get the auditors to make sure that those general entries, closing entries were made correctly. And probably find out, get some of the records too, that they had.
We'll look for him next month then.
Okay. Consider, sign G, considering act of citizens complaint form.
I would like to see if we could somehow consolidate this four-page complaint form down to just a basic page of name and address of the person the complaints were filed on, what the complaint is, if it's, you know, motor vehicle, fence, grass, discharge of firearm, you know, things of that nature, when it occurred, where, I mean, because the, the one that here seems to have a lot of information about vehicles, whether it's not on you, where you put you was on that part of it, so...
Now, this would not cover violation from the city ordinance, right?
Yes.
It should cover, but it's just...
It's more simple than...
Right. These are, these are, it says right here, all the citizens have activated a class, you may submit an emergency ordinance and or state law.
Do we have a court of certified violation of city ordinance? And our police, we go down, see if there's any violations, why would we have to fill out a complaint?
You don't. This is just somebody wants to come in and says, hey, I've got something, I want to bring your attention. It's not really something that requires police to go out.
Because not like a ordinance violation, it would be more of a miscellaneous complaint.
Right, the purpose, the purpose of the form is to allow a citizen to come in and file a citizen's complaint. And, and they're not used very often, but they're maybe, you know, maybe, you know, I'm trying to imagine what you might use it for, you know, your neighbor's, you know, dog's garden or something like that, and you don't want to have...
Can we just convince to like a simple form that just, someone could come in and it's optional, they sign or not? Some people want to complain and then they don't want to, they want to be anonymous.
The purpose of this is so that the NAFDA was pulled out, so it can follow the form. In order to do that, you're gonna have to have a fair, if somebody just wants to come in and complain, they can do that.
Oh, we were always totally happy to complain.
Well, but, but this, this is basically what would be used and moved up in this investigation. And what maybe will happen is if you got something like this, you know, say that the prosecutor gets it and says, hey, now what, chief, we need to come in and look at the evidence. And we need to dig into this order because I don't have enough information here or we need to know more.
But if somebody wants to come in and make a complaint and I want to fill it out, we still would check out the works of the foundation.
Sure.
Okay. People call nine-one-one and you're anonymous, they all cry. You know, they don't want to leave their name or...
We have some ordinance violations that are outstanding right now and we were told that there was no complaint form put up, but that's an error, right, when you just go in.
Your, your, any of your smaller police officers can investigate any...
We have a couple outstanding out there right now, they could, we have, they're set home. You're going to write them?
I wouldn't say they've been set home, they're working. Because we want to...
Seven months is long time.
They've been, they've been sending notices?
The only two complaints on the murder of LaValle, who had created the former, released you very specific instructions on what to do.
What's it done? What were your instructions?
Well, I can talk to you about that.
Okay.
Okay, I like to know more.
I need this, 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 this.
Well, the reason we're at this, it's been.
Basically, we need an investigation, we need to know, get some, give me some pictures, go out there, tell me what kind of paper this is, where is it, what's.
It, it's not even, it's, it's not allowed, it's, granted, it's not grandfathered, it has to go.
And maybe it will?
It is, sir.
But, but see, 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 the idea is, let, let me just kind of follow up with that. I can't come in here and file a sworn document with the court unless I know what kind of trailer it is.
I understand.
What's the year, what's the?
So we need to get our officer back out there to do his job.
We only have one right now, but yeah.
Yes, I know we only have one right now, but we need to do that.
But three months ago, we had one.
Yeah, now, this is an ongoing thing, I think it's ridiculous that it's taken that long to take care of something that's simple. I think Mr. Knox had a question.
If I might add, I'm the one that made the complaint in November, December, January, February, March, and April meeting. The simple complaint in sixty-eight twenty via CUNA is tall grass in excess of five and six-foot accessory buildings on the property, an inactive septic system when the mobile home was removed and not sealed. And I contacted the mayor in December and many, many times. And his last statement to me was in a text back in December, which I can read to you if you'd like, but it says he's waiting for your information, Mr. Penney, on mowing the grass and removing the accessory buildings. Okay, and then, of course, I thought.
What I'd like to tell you is that unlike everybody else in this room, I can't necessarily believe everything I say of people.
I know, I understand.
But what I can tell you is, we looked into it, I said, look, I need these things, if I don't get them, I'm not gonna drive out there and go do it.
Every council person here has seen the violation. Maybe, maybe not Catherine.
I have.
But you've seen the violation in, now, the place is full of rats, large amounts of rats, and they're coming onto my property and they're eating my tomato plants and eggplant. You know, and now, and now I'm getting a little bit more upset. But anyway, I have contacted their county, the environmental services department, they said they would take jurisdiction over that property too, so they are making a visit out here also. Because the city, I told them, basically, the city is doing nothing to issue the code compliance. Or the violation, the actual violation.
Well, there are a lot of people who do things and they, you know, what, you know, they, they expect people, you write a letter, you not do anything, or whatever.
Oh, yeah, the city wrote a letter on this one, they gave them seven days.
And, and there's bits and issues.
And then on the issue of the mobile home, the city wrote another letter, and not only issue two ordinance violation, not violation, but just the letters to be compliant. And then, on top of that, with the property right now, not in compliance as far as the city owners deserve. They came before the city here and asked for a fence permit, but it wasn't the property owner, it was the gentleman that's renting the mobile home. And now he has constructed his fence, it was approved by councilman trainer. And then if y'all want to go look at it, half of the fence is a country fence, and half of the fence is pallets.
Right.
That's not a traditional fence material, even though our ordinance is vague, it does say fence, a fence, and if you were to construe, construe what a fence is, you know, it's, it's not a, a corrugated iron or de-crem like a junkyard, not in a residential area. But anyway, that should never have happened because the property right now is not compliant with the letter that the city sent. That doesn't even make sense, now it's even worse.
Well, and again, I, I understand, I mean, one, one of the things that I said is, I got to have more information, I can't do anything without more information.
Can someone other than the property owner?
Get a permit.
Get a permit?
I think so.
Someone who doesn't own the property?
He's, he's care of custody, control, we issue citations to people for, for weedy lots, they don't have to be the owner of a lot of the property to get a citation. They just have to have some legal ability to, to possess.
Yeah.
And, and whoever happens to be there for the purposes of most ordinances is the one who actually should be given the citation.
Would you have issued a permit with knowing the property was in a code compliance issue?
I, I, I'm, I can't tell you what I would or wouldn't do, I don't issue permits, but.
I was wondering if any of the council persons here would have issued it.
If I've looked at most, most of the ordinances here, in the city, approved them.
Yeah, they are.
They are safe.
They're very simple, should be, this should have been a very simple thing, right? Once you strike an after code compliance issue, then you can go ahead and clear up your fence, but clear up the fence, that is really used traditional fence material.
We have a problem with that, these years.
Yeah, problem. And, and just to follow up on some of the council, we don't try to run your city, you know, we do what we're asked to do. Well, I, I'm not.
And we need the.
Mayor, Mayor Rips, I think, addressed this issue last week with Councilman McCarthy. Correct me if I'm wrong, was it you?
Yes, sir.
Says he's not gonna act on this issue, he doesn't have a complaint signed by me. I talked to Officer Jenkins, how come you haven't issued the citation? He says, well, the mayor says not to.
That's on the fence.
No, that's not on the fence, this is on the property estimate.
Very clear on that. I, I would look into, but we try to limit the amount of time that we spend working on things that we're not asked to work, or that we need, that we think staff should be working on.
Right, and there, go back to the point, we need a good staff in this office.
Can I say something, please? Because I'm tired of that coming up. I had talked to the mayor today, today, what's today's date, I'm sorry, what is today's date?
Third.
The third, about this issue. And I had talked to the attorney today about this issue. I've only been at the city, city, city secretary for three weeks, or is it four weeks? So me being in there and I have acted on it.
I'm not, we're not accusing you of.
I know, I'm just saying, I'm the only ones, isn't it?
No, no.
So how can you not accuse me?
I understand when you're not.
When you say, I'm having a share, is that not accusing me? Is that not accusing me? I'm, isn't it?
And it's not directed to you, Latoya, we do not have a vicious staff.
For the last four months, there, there's some things that need to be addressed. But, um, to, to get back to what we were talking about, this complaint can live anywhere you want it, now, whether it's getting it satisfied with requirements of, of not having operations. When you have one of these, typically, the officer has not issued a citation.
Okay, so, do you think we should, how does the council feel? I personally think this should just be put in file thirteen, well, not thirteen, twelve, and kept in case we ever needed it. But I don't think we should allow, have to allow citizens to make a complaint doing all of this when they just want to come up and make a complaint. That's how I feel.
This complaint, the purpose of this complaint is to investigate a violation of city law and to possibly prepare a, a sworn complaint, which is another type of complaint that's followed in this. This may or may not result.
You don't have to use this, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to find. To have, to have a.
Right, the purpose of this is typically to give a citizen the right to come forward and fill out documents that do not necessarily have to involve. There may be certain kinds of minor violations, parking dog, somebody bought a carrot, you know, it's waking you up, Asian warning or something, I mean, those kinds. These are not major crimes, these are not things that, that, uh, and then, yes, it's used very frequently.
Okay, but a citizen that just wanted to come up here and make a complaint or call and make an anonymous, anonymous complaint could be checked out by one of our police officers? Without having to fill out all of this?
Absolutely. I'll make a marriage after, and I'm stood after, if you don't get it, I'll.
What, no, the form, we're talking about the form.
Yeah.
We don't need it far.
Okay, next item, when you, is considered act of protest, Chief Larry Davis resignation, six, three, two, fourteen.
I'll you to do six, seven.
I have a question about that resignation. I want to know why it's not signed and dated. Uh, anybody can type this and give it to me, I don't accept this as a resignation. There's not a written signature, there's no, um, it's not, I mean, I don't have a date on it, I don't know who typed it, I don't know who accepted it. This isn't how you resign from someplace, you at least sign your name to it and put a date on it, I mean, anybody that can use a computer could have done this.
This was given directly to, uh, Officer Jenkins from Chief Larry Davis.
Okay, well, I think it needs to be taken back to Mr. Davis, he needs to sign it and date it and bring it back to the council so we can accept his resignation.
Well, there's, there's a couple of names, uh.
This isn't a blank form, this isn't a resignation form.
Right, that's what would have been given to him had he not been talking about it. So I had prepared that and I gave it to the mayor, the mayor said he's already resigned, so I had not seen the resignation, but.
Have you, have you seen it now, sir?
Yes. If Officer Jenkins was given, was given, taken by the chief, yes, you can ask him to sign it, but he's not working here anymore.
Yes, exactly, and it's, it's his written, basically typed, and we can't force him to say, you will put this, you will put that, he gave it to me at will, and I had to take it with me.
And, and, and you really do need to accept it because you've got another officer, basically, to.
Yes.
I can't dictate. Well, I think we should make it, um, known that, when people resign, that we need to accept resignations that have at least a signature and a date on it. I think this is very unprofessional.
Yes.
What, what did this, what did this officer do?
What?
You got approved?
Why?
What, what, what if he resigned, he could work someplace else, and if this issue comes up?
You need to have him sign.
But you received it.
If he, if he takes action tonight, accepting his resignation, he's not here.
I'm sorry?
He's gone.
I know he's gone.
No, he said, he's terminated.
But, but in case of, of just a normal resignation, because someone has decided to go work someplace else, I mean, normally a resignation is dated, it's signed.
Sometimes people just tell you, I'm gone, it's dead.
Well, I would like to at least see if Mr. Jenkins would be willing to make a statement on here and sign his name that he personally took it from Mr. Schrader, just so we have it on record, if that would be okay.
Sure, and that's exactly what came down.
Yes, okay, I appreciate that on, on one of these.
And, and he's returned most of his equipment, right?
He's returned all of his equipment. Yes.
Yes, very unfortunate, I, I feel bad about, but I just cannot, this is not acceptable in my eyes.
I know.
Yes.
I, I would, I would recommend that you accept it.
I will only accept it tonight if the subparent signs that he received it and dated for us.
Of course.
Well, you can put.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, I make a motion that Mr. Jenkins, uh, tonight signs the, um, resignation from Officer, um.
Davis.
Chief Davis, uh, that he received his resignation in person and signed a date of for him.
Yes.
That's your motion? Oh, that's my.
That's your motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Yeah, yeah, second by margin.
Does anyone have a blank one that I haven't written all of mine?
Yeah.
That's, we can have it, I said.
Camera.
Here. You know, we see, don't, such and such date. You can go over there, Mr. Jenkins, by Latoya, and do it, you don't have to rip your brain out here. Okay, what's here, it's the twenty, twenty-seven, Mr. Jenkins.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll, I'll make a motion, I'll say.
Can you say it? All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I do have, uh, one other concern on this issue, now, this means Mr. Jenkins, uh, Mr. Mister, uh, the chief is no, uh, Davis is no longer. No, you just need one, we need to have her read this file.
Four, I have my camera.
Oh, um, he is totally gone now, and now what, how are we going to do, now, who has already notified T close on this matter?
See, that, that would be the new, uh, well, he signed with Chief, with your actions, you have to, Mr. Jenkins.
Had, had, and, uh.
It hasn't been done yet, we've been trying to get a password, and we have not had a password, so we may, if we can't get the password and get in there to file the form, then we'll go to precinct four and file that form.
And when is that gonna be done? That should have been done already.
Well, you accepted his resignation.
Well, it, yes, it had to be waited till after tonight now.
Okay.
And then we got it confirmed, I already made a phone call to T close, talked to Jim, Jim is basically waiting for us, it's gonna be confirmed tonight, and then most likely Monday.
Okay.
And we have to.
I just want to make sure we have that, that's a very important document.
And we're on top of it.
Thank you.
Consider an act of protest, Council of Citizens at ACOG newly elected official workshop held July twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, and Saturday. Anyone want to go?
Not interested. I've already done one, thank you.
And this will be, uh.
Well, uh, I mean, any council member that wants to go.
Oh, no.
That's what I said, it's fine, I just don't care. Seventy-five dollars a person, that class can be taken on course, online, that course can be online, taken online.
No question.
Well, it has some extra stuff about, is it possibly, uh, if it might be.
Taxed a bit, right?
Yeah, taxed, except that. It's personal.
Other council members?
That's, that's fine if they want to go.
If other council members intend to go and want to see you to pay for it.
Okay, does anyone want to go, if we just take action? Action? Are you gonna go?
If, if you go, I would like to go, but.
Are you gonna go?
If y'all don't feel, okay.
Gee, that one, that's.
I, I mean, if you feel you need more education, I think it's wonderful if you need to know more because that's how you learn. I have done quite well with the courses online, and I do a lot with T M L online and through emails, and that's how I get my information, so, that's totally up to you guys. You might feel that you need that. So, okay, y'all want to go with it?
No, I'm actually going, I'll go, please.
I'm sorry, no, no, you're not gonna go?
No.
Jimmy?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'll, I'll go.
Okay, I'll make a motion that whoever wants to attend this, uh, ACOG, uh, newly elected official, uh, I'm on the page, your guy, sorry. Um, newly affected official workshop, I'll make a motion that whoever would like to go on council would be able to do it, and the city would pay, I guess, for their, um, membership or whatever to get in. That's what I want to say, but that's what I mean. Yeah, pay for the trip.
That's a motion, I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, and then, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose, motion carried. Any announcements?
Yes, I'm probably the one here, Ma, but I, I do want to ask if I could please, uh, tonight, submit a ad to, uh, Mr. Gibbs so that we could get, uh, ad placed in the paper like he instructed you to do last month, so we could hire our city administrator.
We, we can't take any action on that, please.
I mean, he told us, and he told the paper last month he's gonna do it, he hasn't done it, when he do something, he could get rid of it.
I understand, but you can't discuss events.
Oh, well, that's my announcement, I would like to do that, I'm just saying.
How about next month, the, the midnight?
Yes, are we gonna be good at off agendas again, if we put things on a agenda item, I mean, on the agenda, you know, you can't do that, you can't do that, Mr. Mayor, it's our right.
I need a couple things on the agenda next month, tell them, I, I will instruct.
Is it gonna be removed, that's what I'm asking.
I don't.
Mr. James or Rex?
Do you want to see what it is?
You can't do that.
Oh, you can't do that.
By law, he cannot do that, would you let him know that?
I will, I will give the miracle advice that he asked me to give him, and if I see that they're expecting it to be, then it should be that.
Well, if you're telling me that I cannot present a, 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 a,